Does that mean I need to repeat everything?
No. Can you, because we're gonna look at the next ones, is there a way for the 2019 list just to, not tonight, obviously, just to update that list, show those were done that would move down, you know, to the bottom like Broadmore, Chana Berry, Anethel Hall, and give us an updated list because you said it's done every three years then?
Yeah, yeah, the citywide update is every three years, correct.
But if you could do that, one of the things it does is it will show if we could highlight them, those that were done since the tax was approved, it really is a good thing to tell the residents, here's where your money went, we actually spent it on roads and these are the roads that were done.
Sure.
It's good PR.
Yeah, we can absolutely do that, Ms. Tully, and also if you may remember at a council meeting, Mayor helped me out, it was a while back, but we did have a slideshow, you may remember, that also showed that information, a little PR piece, so we can provide that to you as well, so.
I have one other question.
Yep.
Valley View Road, it's just from the south to Twinsburg, what takes care of it from Highland to Hudson? Is that road starting to, I drive it every day now, and it's starting to get funky? Is it on this list?
Yes, it is, yeah, every road is on the list. I think you mean the southerly end of Valley View Road, is that what you're talking about?
It goes from Highland to Hudson.
Yeah, you mean Twinsburg Road to Hudson. Is that what you're referring to, Ms. Tully?
The one that runs all the way down.
Yeah.
But it's only because it's really, it's not in great shape. And then I know Hudson is doing a lot of water work.
Okay.
So you may want to check with them because they're taking 91 and putting pipes in because some of those places don't have, you know, sewer.
Okay.
It's hard to believe that Hudson doesn't all have sewer and water.
Yeah, no, Hudson has some areas that don't have sewer, I know that much for sure, so.
Yeah, but they're going, they're going down 91, but they put up potential construction signs on that road, so I'm just wondering.
On Valley View as you're approaching 91 in Hudson?
Yep.
Yeah. But.
But if you could update that and then real quick, just read the four that are gonna be done this year.
Absolutely, the four this year is Iroquois Trail, which I actually broke into two parts or two separate roads for us, the first being from Apache to Shoshone. The second part is Iroquois Trail from Shoshone, South Shepherd Hills. I split that out separately for clarification for you guys because that second part also will have a complete concrete curb replacement as well as the new asphalt, so I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that, so hence the reason it's shown in two parts or two separate roads. Also Red Bush Trail and Adderbury Drive, which are off of Shepherd Road near 82.
And then they're gonna crack seal 82, correct?
That's correct, yeah, that would be the, I guess what we'll call the main drag through town, through the town center, basically, all the way west to Northfield Center.
The traffic jam. Well, and actually is a drag raceway when we have people decide that they really need to be in the left lane, not the right lane, and then when they get past eight, I had someone who lives in Sagamore called the drag raceway because of that merge by Aldi's, it gets ugly over there.
Well, the lane all the way to the left is called the passing lane, not the fast lane. That's always a misconception out there, that drives me crazy, so.
Well, it's supposed to be the left turn into Giant Eagle, but everybody uses it to get back in the right line. And they're like, didn't you read the sign? Oh, that's right, what sign? Okay, if anyone else have questions on the roads?
Will the, the crack repair on 82 be done third shift or during hours?
Crack sealing on 82?
Yeah.
Historically, we've done that at night.
Okay.
To avoid traffic, and it's a commercial district, so we're not disturbing any residents.
How about 2 o'clock when everybody's trying to get their Chick-fil-A?
Don't block Chick-fil-A.
I tell ya, they, they can't remodel. I don't know what we're gonna do without them for two months. I do have to tell you, though, the left turn periodically, I'll take the left turn so I can go on, on eight, that works really nice. Most people don't know it exists. So if you take that left turn and then you turn right by call first, nobody knows it exists, it's awesome.
Yeah, use it too.
Yeah. Although I see they're trying to sell the property right next to that, so that could be interesting for traffic. Any other questions on number eight?
Can I just add one thing, because I think it's important, because I field a lot of calls every time we go through this process, but we're gonna do a lot of asphalt spot repairs. We know that there's other roads in town that need attention, and some of the bad areas we can patch up for the time being, and obviously we'll go back and re, revisit those and then probably pave those in the near future, so I wanna at least say that there's gonna be a lot of spot repairs that we do at the end of the season that will also take care of some of the problems that are not as bad as the roads that we have proposed for this evening.
Are you okay, Annette?
Okay.
Swarm of bees or something.
Hearing no other questions. Mr. Counselor Finley, if you could offer this, if no one has problems, we'll do one, two, three, so we can keep moving, spending money appropriately to fix those roads. And then if Benny, if you would be the second. Okay, moving right along to number nine.
Who was gonna introduce that one, Jan?
Mr. Finley's gonna offer first, second, and third, and Mr. Ventura will be the second.
Okay.
Got it.
And if we have no issues, we're gonna adopt that. I don't think anybody raised any issues. And the reason we'll get this updated too is for Mr. Garvis and Mr. Finley, this way you'll have the most current too, as well as us, and again, I think it's, Mr. Larmour, if you're on, I think it's real important for the residents to see. Okay, next up, number nine, this is, who wants to explain this? Mark, Joe?
I will. Jan, I will. Can you hear me?
But there's no, no face there.
Well, I'm on my little phone, so.
Okay, Calvin.
Let's try. Anybody see me?
Yep.
We see him now.
All right, so this is for the right-in, right-out project. It's not complete yet because of the monument sign that hopefully will get finished this year, and so we can't bond it out for 20 years yet because all the costs aren't complete. It won't come in at 580, but we just wanted to give us ourselves some room. We're not gonna borrow 580,000, but I haven't received the final numbers on the monument sign, so we will probably just do it for what it was before, 575.
And that cost is paid through the assessments by the property owners?
Ninety-eight percent of it, yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah.
Because that's an important factor.
Okay. All right, I mentioned that during the council meeting.
I'd appreciate it, it's a good point for the residents to hear.
Okay.
Because when they hear you're, you're going out for 575, when you say ninety-eight percent of that is ours, that's a big sigh.
Yeah, that, yeah.
You know, it's when your kids want to borrow 10,000.
You're right, right.
Yeah, but ninety-eight percent will be paid by school, so don't worry, Dad.
That's right.
Any questions? Mr. Garvis? If you offer, I'll be the second, and if there's no problems with it, again, we'll do one, two, three. Mr. Ventura, do you have a feeling for when you'll be able to actually submit, or are you gonna submit right away? Do you have to wait for the sign?
Are we asking me, Jan?
Yeah, when do you anticipate going out for the bond?
When, when all costs are in, so the construction of the monument sign will have to be complete, the vendor contractor will have to be paid in full, and any outstanding engineering or legal invoices will have to be paid in full. So we're hoping that we can assess in September, send that down to the county, but I really haven't heard much. I don't know if Joe has an update on the monument sign.
It'll be approximately the same time that council will be voting on the final assessment ordinance. We're currently going through some of the boards and commissions within the city for them to provide some input as to the signage, and we also are reaching out to the property owners who are gonna be contributing to the special assessment regarding the signage to make sure they're up to date as well, so a couple more months at least.
Okay. What, how have we paid for this already? Have we already done a bond?
No, we borrowed, it's called a bond anticipation note, so we did a note offering, and this is renewing, rolling the note over for another year, basically, because we don't feel that, but we are gonna let ourselves some room in, in this offering to call it early if construction and all the bills are paid by, and, and the costs are, you know, signed off on by the engineer in time for us to, I'd love to assess it by the end of this year and get it on the tax bill for next year.
So the note is for 20 years, but if they all pay their assessments, we pay our 2% this year too, or next year?
Yeah, we'll be done, yeah, we'll be done with our 2%.
Okay, so realistically, we could be taking out the note in September, but the whole thing paid off by January?
We'll get this money here probably by May, so we could continue to pay bills for the project, and then hopefully convert this to a 20-year bond, you know, later this year.
So their assessment is for 20 years?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
And they have an option to prepay it if they want, once we have the final costs that are known.
So that, yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that, Mark, that also adds, I think, 30 days after the, all the costs are in, so we can offer their dollar amount that they would pay in full upfront if they need to, or want to. The window's pretty, the window's pretty tight.
The one property that's for sale across from, when you come in, the right turn, are they part of the assessment? The one across from call, thank you.
Yes, they are.
I see Mr. G go. I don't know if that's a bobblehead or that was an answer, but I must.
It was both.
So if someone, if someone develops on that property, the assessment for all the other properties doesn't change because someone's already paying the assessment on that, that's already been cut up into the assessment amount?
The owner is already responsible for it, yeah.
Okay.
So if he sells, if the assessment goes to the new owner?
It's on the tax duplicate, goes with the property, correct?
Yeah.
Any other questions? If not, I lost Mr. V. You want one, two, three, John?
Yeah, that would be appreciated, that could help speed up, speed up the process, hopefully.
Well, if there's no issues with it, we'll do one, two, three, and adopt, Mr. Garvis? Your offering, okay. Last one.
It was added, yes, I got you, one, two, three.
Yep, one, two, three. My last one is ordinance number 10, which is, I love that it is relative to animals and fowl. I think our chicken raiser, I know of one in our, our city. I think the other one doesn't do it anymore. Anyhow. Mark, would you like to speak to the poop law?
Sure, so this came up, the police department had reached out, indicated they had received at least one complaint recently, I think these roll in periodically. In discussing with the city's prosecutor, it was contemplated that while we do have a nuisance ordinance on the books, it might be beneficial to have an ordinance that explicitly speaks to dog waste that's deposited in, in public or on private property that's not owned by the dog owner. So that's what this does, it basically requires somebody to have the ability to pick up dog waste as well as a requirement that they actually pick it up. It's a minor misdemeanor if you don't comply with it.
You know, St. McCauley already has that, so we have to add our language to it?
If we want to issue our own citation, it's a mayor's court.
Okay, because I know I looked it up in the, St. McCauley did it in 1988, so I guess we're a little behind. The Ohio law allows every individual township and city to do their own, and I looked up, Northfield has one, they have their misdemeanors no more than $150. Do you know what ours is?
That's by, that's by law, they're consistent across the board.
Yeah, well.
Up to $150 fine, and it's always up to the magistrate or to the judge to waive a portion if they deem appropriate.
So we don't put the dollar amount in here like other cities have done?
I'm sure that's somewhere in our codifieds.
Well, I couldn't find it, that's what I was looking for, trying to see. I know we have, North Olmsted has 50 bucks per occurrence, so I was like, okay, I don't know if we have to put it in here or not, or if it's already in there.
Yeah, we don't have to include it.
And then I have a, this is just a generic question, how do you know, I mean, that it's this person's dog that you gotta go after? The resident complains, but what proof do you have?
The same way you know that somebody stole something from somewhere, you know, it's based on either direct or circumstantial evidence. Could be a report that an eyewitness saw it, could be the officer goes up and asks, and they say, yep, that was me, you know, there could be a variety of scenarios.
It's also important to add that Lieutenant Yakapowicz has worked on this for quite some time, and I know we've had some complaints, and that's what kind of spurred this legislation, so you could have the chief speak to it when we get to that point in the meeting as well.
Yeah, I'd just like him to talk about how they enforce it, because that's the first question out is, how to enforce, who, you know, I saw a dog running across at the park and he pooped, but how do you know who's what, when, so. Mr. Ventura, I'm gonna give this one to you with Jessica as the second. If there's no issue, anyone have questions?
Yeah, why are police dogs exempt from this legislation?
So I took a variety of different ordinances from other communities in the state and reviewed them with the police department and with the prosecutor, and this was the one that they selected, and it contained that exemption in it.
You would think that they would want to be exemplary example and pick up.
Yeah.
Well, and they most likely are, which is.
How do you give a traffic ticket of?
I could see, I could see a scenario where they could argue that they need to continue moving in whatever they're currently doing, and they can't stop and clean up because they're in the middle of performing their duties, right?
Well, that I can see, yeah, but they're just walking around and it happens, they're exempt and whatever.
Right, but if they're in the middle of tracking somebody, or they're in the middle of like chasing a guy, or they get called, right, they gotta go.
Right, yeah, I, I don't have any problem with that, it's just when that's not happening, they still have the exemption.
They've noted that it says while in the performance of police duties, so if they're off the clock, if they're not performing police duties, they, they are then no longer exempt, so I think that helps a little bit.
Keep in mind, they're performing duties in an official capacity for the city of Macedonia, so the city would essentially be citing itself, which wouldn't be logical.
Right.
I can assure you, our dogs are not gonna defecate anywhere, we're gonna leave it, so if we have the opportunity to pick it up, we'll, we'll take care of that, so I hope that's not a concern.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Finley. Hearing none, I would assume, Mark, the chief would like one, two, three?
It's purely a council's discretion.
Jan, I'd like, I'd like to let it go to two readings.
Well, I was just gonna say, we could do it just one to let people give us their opinion?
Yeah, I would agree with you.
So Benny, we'll just do first reading, Jessica, hold the second till the next time around. Oh, yeah, then we have, you know, duty to pick this up again next meeting. Okay. Blacked. Boy, okay, I love that we only have three, because that means we actually, we will be having, after we get through the department reports, I will be making an executive session request, and in the beginning, we'll be inviting in the mayor, Mark, and Annette, and then the mayor's gonna excuse himself, so. Any questions? If not, you got four minutes to hit the restroom. Okay. And counsel and Annette, I believe you also got the executive session length? Did Kyle send it to you? Okay, cool. Okay.
Five, I think we're good. Okay, thank you, and hello and welcome to the February 11th, 2021 council meeting. It is 7:31 PM. Will Ms. Traska please call the roll?
Ms. Brand?
Here.
Mr. Finley?
Here.
Mr. Garvis?
Here.
Mrs. Tully?
Here.
And Mr. Ventura?
Here.
Next, we will have the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 28th, 2021?
I'd like to make the motion that we accept the minutes as presented in the meeting on January 28th, 2021, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next up is the public comments. Ms. Traska, do we have any public comments this evening?
No, we do not.
Okay, do we have any correspondence from the clerk?
We do not either.
Okay. Move right in depending on new legislation, first on the docket is resolution number eight, 2021.
I move to author ordinance number eight, 2021, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
A resolution authorizing the city engineer to prepare plans, bids, and specifications, and further authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids for various roadway improvement projects for the 2021 road improvement program.
Okay, Mr. Gelotti, take it away, sir.
Sure, thanks, Mayor. This is our annual piece of legislation to authorize the city to go out for bids for this year's road program. The four roads to be paved this year are Iroquois Trail from Apache to Shoshone, Iroquois Trail from Shoshone to Shepherd Hills Boulevard. That portion will carry with it a concrete curb replacement as well, Red Bush Lane and Adderbury Drive, as long, as well as our annual miscellaneous maintenance repair items at various locations throughout the city, and we would ask for a third read tonight so that we can move forward.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move to adopt resolution number eight, 2021, and post the same according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Brand?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Tully?
Yes.
And Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Resolution number eight carries. Ordinance number nine.
Mr. Mayor, I move to offer ordinance resolution number, or ordinance number nine, 2021, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Mr. Varus?
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, could you read it first?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. That delay always gets me, I apologize.
It's okay, I figured I'd wait. All right. An emergency ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale of not to exceed $583,000 of bond anticipation notes of the city of Macedonia, Ohio, in anticipation of those issuance of bonds to pay the property owner's portion of the cost in anticipation of the levy and collection of special assessments related to the construction of a right-in, right-out access road off State Route Eight to provide ingress and egress to the crossings at Golden, Golden Link Shopping Center, together with all necessary uppertances and related improvements thereto. And also, the finance director has presented to me the fully executed fiscal officer certificate.
Thanks, Anissa.
Director Varus?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a continuation of the project that the road work was completed last year. Now we're looking to finish off the monument sign this year. Once that's complete and all costs are in, we can then have those costs computed by parcel and offer them a 30-day cash payment option. Once that cash payment option expires, we will then present council with legislation to bond the remaining costs that hadn't been paid upfront out over 20 years. And 98% of that project will be paid through the special assessment.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move to adopt ordinance nine, 2021, and post the same according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Brand?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Tully?
Yes.
And Mr. Ventura?
You're muted, Ben.
Yes.
Resolution number nine carries. Ordinance number 10.
Your Honor, I wish to present ordinance number 10, 2021, for its first reading only by title only.
An ordinance amending chapter 505 of the codified ordinances of the city of Macedonia relative to animals and fowl.
And Chief Holden, can you talk about this a little bit and how this came about, please?
Yes, sir. On occasion, we get complaints of dogs pooping on people's yards, and in talking with the city prosecutor, she felt it would be best if we had an ordinance that clearly established a law regarding this, this, this topic. So we reached out to Mark, and Mark put together this ordinance for us.
Do you have a lot of complaints coming to your department from this that was kind of what spurred this?
No, we don't get a lot of complaints on this, we get some frequent flyers, so to speak, on it, but we don't get a lot.
Thank you. All right, do we have any other motions or legislative actions? Hearing none, I will go into my mayor's report. The total mayor's court deposits from January 1st to January 31st, 2021, was $9,094. One of the first things I want to talk about tonight is something that I witnessed this week, and I thought it was pretty amazing, and it's something that our fire department does that for safety purposes, and it just shows the breadth of what they do in, in terms- for safety purposes, and it just shows the breadth of what they do in, in terms of, um, their abilities and what they're trained to do. So, uh, they did a, a fire rescue training on ice at the park in the, the lake that we have there. Uh, I'm going to try and get that video up to you here in a few minutes, but, uh, I'll come back to that because I wanted everyone to kind of see what they did that day and how awesome it was. And it was really cool to witness that and, and just to know that they have so many different things that they're trained to do. So we're, we have a, a very good department that has a lot of knowledge in a lot of different areas. It's not just putting fires out or helping you if you're not feeling well. So I wanted to illustrate that in the video, which I'll try to get up here in a second. Next thing I want to do is recognize some volunteers. In each meeting, uh, until I get through all of them, I want to recognize, uh, some of our committees. So the first one I want to start with today was our Parks and Recreation Commission. Uh, we have six volunteers on this, uh, commission. These folks give their time. They're not paid for it. They help make decisions about different things that they do there. There's a lot of amazing things happening in our parks and recreation right now. So I wanted to recognize the folks that are the volunteers there. Uh, we have Barbie Luxo, or I'm sorry, Lucivo, who is the chair, Stacy Suji, who is the vice chair, Karen Bartolozzi, Joe Bieber, Jerry Benedictus, and Jason Heck. I also want to recognize the council members that are a part of that. The council member that serves as the council chair there is Jessica Brant, the director of Parks and Recreation, Jason Chaddick, and our service director, Jason, or John Notavance, who are all a part of that. And I appreciate all those folks that give up their time to do that. Sometimes it's extremely time consuming, but a lot of the things that are coming out of there are amazing. And I think that people will see that in our parks and our recreation this summer as a lot of the programs are rolling out. And again, I can't thank you guys enough for, for all you do there. Another thing I'm going to enact next week, we're going to have a, a business feature. So with all the tough things that have gone on with the pandemic and businesses struggling, we're going to start to have a, a weekly feature and we're going to kind of focus on the restaurants to start. So next week, we're going to have a feature on Facebook because I think that's the place we get the most traction. We'll probably put it on our website too. But we're going to start to feature our businesses and talk about some of the struggles they've had, where they're at, some of the things that are going very well for them. Uh, you know, maybe there's a, a product that they put out there that, that people really enjoy. So we really want to focus in on those people and we're going to continue to do that until we get through everybody and then things get back to normal. Hopefully that happens sooner than later, but we really want to focus in on our businesses that are struggling. And, and the, the mom and pop shops, I like to call them, are the ones we're going to start with and then we'll move out to the larger entities. But, uh, we will start that next week and I think you guys will enjoy that. And it'll be good to, to show people some of the variety of things that we have out there. Uh, on the same front with restaurants, uh, we have Raising Cane's. Uh, they are going through the process through planning commission and the BZ. I think things are for the most part wrapped up and I can tell you that they are looking for a May opening date. And, uh, we're very excited to have them come to town. I have not personally had it, but from what I hear about it, it's really good. And they, a lot of people say that the Chick-fil-A sauce is good, but the Raising Cane sauce leaves it in the dust. So I guess we'll, we'll find that out when it comes. But, uh, many people that I've talked to are excited and I'm kind of excited to try it now because it's been hyped up a lot. So can't wait for them to come. I also want to touch on snow and ice. This year has been crazy in terms of predictability. And I'm sure Mr. Notavance will talk about this in his report as well. But, you know, we sit down and we look at the, the reports coming in and the forecasts. And I could tell you, there was one night where we saw a storm system moving in and the entire screen was blue and we thought it was going to be the storm of the century. We didn't get one flake. So, you know, as it goes in the Cleveland area, i- it's so unpredictable. And I can only ask people to be careful and be patient because we try to do our best to predict what's coming, have our, our staff ready to go and fight those storms. And they're working very hard and they work very long hours. And I want to show my appreciation for our service staff because they, they do put in a lot of time and effort to get those roads clear for you. And I can tell you this year, we've seen a profound difference when the roads are clear and what they're doing. We're also going to be trying, I, I think I mentioned this in the past, but there is a, a type of salt called Clearlane, which will be started to use, to be used this year. It, it melts a lot faster and it works in colder temperatures. It comes at a higher cost. We're going to test it out. I believe, John, we're going to have that next week, did you say?
I hope so. Yeah, it's been ordered and it works, uh, the, uh, delivery. So it should be next week.
So Director Notavance and I looked up some of the temperatures. Your normal white salt is only effective up to like 15 degrees. It's not going to melt as fast or as well as the enhanced salt, the Clearlane salt that we're going to try and attempt to use. So I think once we put that down, uh, we'll, we'll see a difference. We're going to test it as I've alluded to in the past too. And, uh, we should be able to do that next week. So I'm, I'm kind of excited for that at this point. And, uh, hopefully that'll, it'll show a difference. And if it works out, um, we may use that exclusively. Uh, but again, it comes at a higher cost. So we're going to do some tests with it. But I could tell you from my experience in the service world, we put that salt down once to clear salt, or the white salt, three times. So it's a three to one that, you know, when we were in our test, that's how effective it was. Now, the only downside to that is when the guys are out plowing and it's snowing continually and we're plowing and dumping salt. A lot of times you dump the salt and you're, you're, you're plowing the salt off. So you may notice if we're snowing and it keeps accumulating on the ground, you may not see salt going down. That's another thing, uh, I'm sure Director Notavance will talk about. But if you don't see salt coming out of the truck, it's because there's no way we're going to put salt down and then come back and push it right back off the road. We're going to do our best to keep the roads clear. And a lot of times when it's bad like that, we'll, we'll do hills, curves, and stop signs to keep the, those areas as dry as possible, not dry, but, uh, not as slippery so that you have easy way of travel there. Um, this Saturday is Valentine's Day. I just want to wish everyone a happy Valentine's Day. Um, and I always leave with, please don't drive distracted, put the phones down and drive the vehicle. And, uh, Mr. Collins, are you available? Are you able to show that video or are we having difficulties?
Uh, no, unfortunately I'm having a problem with my laptop. I'm trying to download it on my personal one so I can get it up here. Um, if I don't have it up here by the end of the meeting, I will post it on the homepage of the website.
And we'll probably get that up on our Facebook page too. I apologize for that. We wanted to show that, but technical difficulty.
Yeah, I'll get it on Facebook as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move right into committee reports.
Um, Parks and Rec Committee meets on next Wednesday, the 17th at 6:00 PM. There will be, um, a link to the meeting on the website. Uh, if you click on meeting portal, you'll find it there. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
The cemetery board, um, we now have the website up at www.northfieldmacedoniansem壇ary. Yeah, that's a lot of words all rolled into one, dot com. Um, what we are doing is, and we've talked about this for years, but we're actually doing it now. Some of the records that were, um, earlier than the 1800s were destroyed. So we are scanning all the records that we have. They go back to the late 1800s. And we're also looking at possibly purchasing a scanner that can, you know how you have books? And when you pull it out, the pages are rounded, but it scans it and makes it look flat. So we're looking into that because we'd like to get every bit of records on the website, but also then we know all the records are secure. We don't have to worry about if we have a leak in the, the mausoleum that it destroys records. So, um, it's a work in progress. It will take obviously quite a bit of time because there are a lot of records to be done. And, um, but we are going to be doing it and then you'll be able to take a look at the history as well as who's in the cemetery. Because if you look in the one back card, it's the pioneers that came first. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? All right, we'll move into department reports, starting with Director Chaddick, Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would like to add, because I know the importance, Chick-fil-A does have a fantastic sauce. I can confirm from many experiences, Raising Cane's does have the best.
Well, thank you for that.
There is my, that, that's my very biased feedback for that one. Um, so going into Parks and Recreation, I'd like to just take a moment to highlight a couple, uh, things going on. You'll notice an array of spring classes and programs being offered. Uh, we are working very diligently on, uh, creating opportunities for the community to get out. And one of the biggest points of feedback we're receiving from people is how can we get out and do some physical activity? Uh, get out of the house, away from the virtual environment and get into, uh, classes and programs. So staff is working very hard to provide these opportunities. We're also currently doing summer planning, which involves summer camp and swim lesson programs. So we are progressing forward on all of these things while abiding by all COVID-19 protocols that are in place. We currently have our spring season of manorays swimming going on. I mean, we are, because we can't go compete against other people right now, uh, we are going to do some internal, uh, time trial days, kind of like what you would see during the US qualifying, uh, when they're doing the Olympics. So we're going to have some internal, uh, time trials going on to give the kids a meet experience. So that's some of the adjustments we're making. Swim lessons are currently active for the month of February. And right now we're working on some various maintenance items, uh, throughout the facility, having to do mainly with heating and cooling systems at the moment. Uh, that's one of the hot topics we have as we've continued to get temperature dips. And the final piece that I'd like to cover today, which I'm sure the group will be happy to hear about, the hot tub is almost done and ready to deliver back to service. So if I could for a moment, I'd like to share my screen and show just a couple clips. Is that okay, Mayor? Do we have a minute to do that? So can everybody see my screen with the pictures here?
Yes.
Yep. Okay, so this is right after they did the demo. As you can see, all the jets, all the piping, the concrete has been chipped away. This is part of where they were going into the 18 inches of concrete. Uh, here's a close-up view on it. As you can see, the jets and some of our other piping, return lines. then, oh, my computer's going to make me shift. This is the middle of the project when they had rebalanced everything, put in the concrete. And this is before they added the Diamond Bright, which is the common surface that gets added to aquatic facilities. Uh, as you can see, the big disaster that it was about a week and a half, two weeks ago, as they, uh, redid the concrete. And this is what it looks like today with the Diamond Bright foundation laid. As you can see in the very center of this picture, uh, right here, this is a new light. So we will have a working light in the hot tub now. That was an added addition we did as the project was going on. So this will give you a close-up to the stairs and some of the tile, uh, the pool, uh, sorry, the hot tub overlay as a whole. Uh, the main drains did get, uh, dug out so the issue could be handled correctly. And that is my final picture, the overview of the hot tub. So we are now at a point that we are preparing to open. Uh, I anticipate that will happen in about the next, uh, maybe three to four business days, sometime mid next week. To end it next week, I think we'll open. We do have a couple of maintenance items that we need to take care of in the pool. Uh, maintenance items that literally have just, uh, gone on over time that we need to take care of, such as redoing the sand in our filters and, um, being able to do some, uh, pump maintenance as well as some, uh, gauge maintenance on the filters. And Mayor, that concludes my report for today.
Thank you. I also have that, that is an elephantine hot tub. That thing is massive.
It is.
But I know, I know there's a lot of people that enjoy that. I know there's a lot of, uh, my senior friends that are excited to have that back in service. So looking forward to that.
Thanks, Mayor.
I didn't, I didn't say you, Benny.
You said senior friends.
Okay.
Mayor, I have that, that video. They can try to get up here now if you'd like.
All right, let's finish this and then we'll get to that. Kyle, hang on one second, please.
Uh, Mr. Chaddick, I have one question for you. Are, how are you going to go about keeping, um, the same way you do with the pool with, with time limits and, and maybe appointments or whatever? How, how is that going to be handled when that does reopen?
That's a great question. And, uh, what we're going to do initially is we're going to have a limit, uh, as far as how many people can go in that particular body of water. We'll get that spaced out, uh, tomorrow and Monday. And then we'll make the determination if we want to have it be appointment-driven versus people showing up. They can arrive, they can attend, go in the hot tub. We'll have literally spots where you can sit. So we have everything marked out. And then I think what we're going to do at this point, the thing we've talked about is just simply limiting time, um, and having a, a timeframe that people can sit in there. And yes, if there's a wait, it's going to be a little bit shorter. If there's nobody waiting, then you can stay in a little bit longer.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chaddick. Uh, next up is our IT Department Director Collins, and I think it's timely that you have that video ready. Are you with us? Did we lose you, Mr. Collins? Oh, there he is.
Chief Ripley, who are these, uh, folks that are going out there?
Well, the gentleman in the yellow is, uh, Paul Solinsky Jr. Um, he is a ice rescue technician. He works full-time for the city of Cogga Falls. I'm not quite sure who's in the Gumby suit, which is the, what appears to be orange, but is actually red. Um, and what they're doing is showing how he's shuffling is so that the weight is distributed on the ice so they don't break through. You'll notice anybody who's near the water is wearing a personal flotation device. We call them life, you know, you call them life preservers. That's so if anybody has a problem, they don't, they can self-rescue and we can get them out without them going underwater. If you fall into frozen water, into ice, excuse me, water under ice, it's very cold and you will get hypothermia very quick. And what happens is your muscles don't react and you have a hard time hanging on. Um, the gentleman in the suits don't have PFTs on because the suits themselves offer flotation. And you can see how he almost looks like a, a marshmallow man. That's the air in the suit being forced up by the water. And this is just, that was an individual going in to be the, the, uh, pretend victim. Um, so he is able to hold on to the ice. A real victim is going to struggle to hang on to that ice. And he, he's walking and like I said, keeping his both feet in contact with the ice, keeping weight on it. Um, he should drop down here shortly. We always go in the water away from the victim because if we get close to the victim, the victim is terrified and, and they're dying. And they want, they will grab on to us and potentially drag us under. So that's why they come in behind them. They put a rope around them. They clip it. He'll give a hand signal to the crews on shore. And there's, they're also communicating and then they will pull both of them out of the water. He's telling them to haul. And it pulls them both up on the ice. A real victim is totally helpless in that scenario. Um, they're under our control and they will drag them as long as they can, all the way off the ice to safety because we don't want to put anybody else on that ice and absolutely has to be on that ice. Mayor, if I could, um, I just want to say that the rea, the reason we train on this stuff is that in the fire service, that's something we call a low-frequency, high-risk activity. It's not something on a regular basis. We have to try to stay proficient. That's very difficult in Northeast Ohio. We've been trying to do ice training for our new guys for a few years. And we have to have some halfway decent ice to do it. So, um, we're very appreciative to get the ice this year. Um, all three shifts were up there Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. They did some pre-study in, um, books, classroom per se. And then they had two hours of practical experience and every one of the individuals actually got in the water. And it's very beneficial for these ladies and gentlemen to also serve as victims so they know what that feels like. And then they, um, they serve as the rescuer, then they become the victim. Um, and the guys love the training. It's very beneficial. So thank you for showing a video. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And God forbid we ever to use it, but I'm glad to know that we know how to handle those situations. So thank you for that.
Yes.
Okay, Director Collins, do you have anything else to add?
Uh, I just wanted to say I, I did get the opportunity to watch, uh, all of the videos of the fire department training on the ice. And it is impressive work and, and I'm glad that one of them will be available to pull me out of the ice if I'm dumb enough to fall under. So, uh, other than that, uh, no reports, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is Mr. Gelati.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, counsel, I apologize. I do not have any fancy screen sharing or video for you guys here tonight like everyone else. So I'll just speak for a moment. Uh, thank you for the passage of resolution eight for the road program, uh, bidding. Uh, with that in place, so we'll move forward, uh, with the bid process, uh, so we can get started. the bid process. So we can get started maintaining roads as soon as weather allows. No further report.
You need any firefighters, Joe? Are you okay?
I'm gonna hit the mute button now, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Chief Golden.
Thank you, Mayor. All I have is just a reminder, if you leave your car in your driveway overnight, just lock the door, don't have any valuables visible. You go out to the store, the rec center, anyplace else like that, lock your doors and don't have anything exposed that people could see and possibly break the window and take from you. That's all I have.
And also, I'll reiterate what we talked about in our last meeting, that leaving those things visible and people stealing those things, they're not looking to do anything other than take valuables. And we did, your department thankfully, aided in catching all the people that committed these crimes. So kudos to the police department for that.
Thank you.
I have one quick question for the chief.
Yes, ma'am.
My understanding is the curfew expired today. Do you know what the impact is on your, do you have to notify anyone? Do you, I mean, I guess it's gone totally.
We haven't had any issues with the curfew. So I haven't read the whole thing yet. I'm gonna have to look at that. But we haven't had any issues with it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Director Notavange.
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks for giving the report. I can just say I have nothing to report now, right?
Sorry about that.
Oh, that's okay. That's okay. I should have known. But as the mayor did say, this winter season has been tricky. It's been a moving target. We've been on the phone multiple times with each other. Like he said, when a storm's coming in, it's showing on the radar, and it does absolutely nothing here. It seems like now 6% chances of snow have turned into 100% chances here. It's just last week, I called the mayor on the way home. I left about 10 after 4:00. And at 4:30, it was snowing and covering the roads. I had to turn around and call our guys back in because they weren't calling for it, but it came anyway. So we're trying to just prepare for the worst, but hope for the best when it comes to anything that possibly is coming in here. I know there's a change for next week. They're calling about three systems coming in next week, one to three inches on one day, three to five another, and another one to three. Now I looked at it before the meeting, I saw one to three, and then the other two were less than an inch of snow expected. So let's hope that pans out for us that way. But we are expecting, just in case, to have that snowfall. We are running the night shift, as I had mentioned before. So that is limiting our guys now to drive time. Like the mayor said before, before we do night shifts, you know, guys can stay in the trucks anywhere from, you know, 12 to as long as 16 hours. By doing the night shift, they are confined to a 12-hour timeframe only. So that gives them more time to rest after their long shift. Also with the enhanced salt, we're hoping it will show a difference in the treatment of the road. It does allow, as the mayor had mentioned, that it's a one to three ratio. And so it also allows for less salt to be used on the roads. A couple times now with our staff, we have actually stopped them from plowing altogether, told them to relax, go back out after a half hour and see what the road looks like and seeing how the salt's actually doing its job underneath that snow. So we're not just knocking it off the road and just reapplying over and over again. So they're seeing how the effects are. And it's working really well. And other than that, let's just hopefully get through the season. Hope for the best, as I said. And that's all I have.
Isn't that why they say a meteorologist in Cleveland is the best job in the world? Because you could be dead wrong. And it's okay.
It is. And I also, I think the Doppler radars are on cloud coverage. So that's what we're actually seeing and not snowfall.
Well, thank you. Okay, Chief Ripley.
Thank you, Mayor. I feel I have to mention, our community at Nordonia Hills as a whole lost another stellar citizen. Rick Yule was the Northfield Center Road Superintendent. He worked for their road department since he was in high school. And Rick unexpectedly passed away Monday morning. We responded to the call. So I just want to give my condolences to Brooke, his wife, and his many friends and families. And the community in a whole lost a stellar individual. We had the opportunity to work with Rick over Northfield Center. He always supported us. And he will be sorely missed by all the fire department personnel. So I'm also getting sick of talking about the people that passed in our meetings. So Monday afternoon, we also had a pretty major condo fire in Northfield Center. The guys did a phenomenal job. A-shift upon arrival, made entry, knocked a fire. We contained the body of the fire, two remained, the bedroom on the second floor, smoke and heat damage throughout. No one was injured, but it was a loss, fire and excess of $100,000 at our estimation. And we're not insurance adjusters. So the other thing is the radio system. We're still hitting road bumps, speed bumps every day, working through that. We're just gonna make sure that it's right when we go to it. A lot of the equipment's already been installed in the radio tower. And now we're working on the equipment in the vehicles and getting the councils. There's gonna be a training council installed within the next week or so. Sergeant Plez from the police department, he's the dispatch supervisor, is working with the vendor on that. But I will give you, I'll let you guys know when we're up and running. That's the end of report unless someone has any questions.
Thank you for bringing up Mr. Yule. We obviously, from the city's perspective, offer our condolences. And unfortunately, I was just informed before the meeting as well that Father Kevin, Our Lady of Guadalupe lost his mother yesterday. And we want to offer our condolences to him as well. And he told me that the services are Tuesday. So if you're a parishioner of Our Lady of Guadalupe and you see this before that time, I'll definitely offer your condolences to him and his family. Okay, Director Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. HR remains very busy, but I do not have anything new to report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Veras.
Thank you, Mayor. Our search for a new employee to replace Andrea May when she retires in May is finished. We've hired Kelsey Overacre. She's out of Twinsburg and she's gonna start March 1st. Other than that, we've been busy gathering and scanning information that our GAAP conversion team needs to prepare the GAAP conversion financials by the end of February. And also our auditors use that information as well, in addition to other information we've been adding to. Kyle set up an open drive so they can both access that securely and with, you know, their username and password. So, end of my report here.
Thank you. All right, Director Gaddati.
No report, sir.
Okay, do we have any unfinished business? Do we have any new business?
I just want to say congratulations to the Nordonia Boys Bowling Teams. The JV team won the Suburban League Championship. And the varsity team went 13-0 this season and will be going to championship this weekend. Congratulations to them.
Thank you. Any other new business?
I'd like to make the motion, enter into executive session pursuant to RC 121 dot 22 D1, to discuss the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, demotion, compensation, or the investigation of complaints concerning a public employee or official.
Do I have a second? Roll call, please.
Ms. Brand?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thrown, man.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Miss, Mrs. Tully?
Yes.
And Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Okay, well, we're going into an executive session and we'll come out to adjourn at that point. So if everyone that's involved in that can log off and log back in, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
There he is.
Okay. I'd like to make a question to adjourn. Turn it up, Dave.
Second.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned at 9:28. Thank you.